We will bring, our, thank you sir, we'll bring today's meeting, Evolus City Council Meeting, March 17th, St. Patrick's Day, 2025, here at the City Council Chambers, to order. Jackie, would you do a call to order, please?
Yes, Mayor. Councilor Rousey?
Here.
Councilor Coivinin?
Here.
Councilor Purpich?
Here.
Councilor Lillis?
Here.
Mayor Rome?
Here. Thank you very much. We'll start off with the approval of minutes. We have our minutes from the City Council Meeting on March 3rd of 2025. We have a motion to move on those.
So move.
Moved by Rousey. Support by Purpich. Any conversation or any changes? Push those through, push those minutes through as approved. Thank you very much. Approval of the agenda. I'd like to make one change to the agenda, if okay with you gentlemen. Number six, I'd like to remove it. Oh, we need a motion first, you're right.
We need a vote, not a motion.
Oh, you're, you're right, I'm just moving too fast, I'm too excited about topics on here. Can I get a vote, I'm sorry, to accept the minutes as they were posted? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Now, we'll accept the minutes as they were posted. Now, we'll move on to the agenda. Gentlemen, I would like to look to remove number six, the proposal of services for the junior high parcel lot, after some information that was learned today in a meeting, I'd like to bring it up at the workshop that we're going to have next week. So if we can just remove it and push it to the future, that would be great. Other than that, does there any other thing with the agenda? Motion to move to accept the agenda?
So move.
Support.
Moved by Purpich, support. Coivinin, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Wonderful. So we'll move forward, Jackie, with the way it is, minus number six. Thank you very much. All right, we're up for public comment. People here that would like to speak, we have three minutes. With the three minutes, just know that there's no guarantee that you'll get a response back, just the acknowledgement that we heard what you had to say. And we will just start with whomever would like to go first.
Yep, go ahead. You go ahead, come up to the mic for me, please, thank you. My name is Molly Cooper, I'm a veteran, and Mr. Rousey has had experience with me in my action for the flag. I've had issues here in the city with the failure of the Public Works Department of lowering the flag to half mast, half staff, however you want to call it, when it has been appointed by the President and also by the Governor of the state. Regardless of your political affiliations, who you like, who you don't like, there's a protocol, and veterans serve for that reason. We serve for the flag and for the people. Now, there was a gentleman that was, that passed away in the state of Minnesota, and the Governor asked that flags be flown at half staff. It set the state up, but we're all a municipality to the states. And I think it's important that we follow, you know, what our Governor requests us to do as it relates to the flag, all laws, but I mean really, to the flag. It's in honor of veterans, and it's in honor of local people that serve their communities. This particular gentleman was a chief of a fire department, and I would hope that we would make it a policy that the Public Works should not have to be, Director should not have to be asked by City Council to lower the flag. I would hope that the community next door would lower the flag if something, God forbid, happened to our chief, or, you know, our police department. It's a respect thing, and it was ordered by our Governor, and we are a municipality of the Governor, of our Governor, our state, we accept funding from our state, and I think it's important that our Public Works Director doesn't tell me that I should have to come here to address it, so it's because his previous boss told him he didn't have to do it. I don't think that's right. airing dirty laundry at a City Council Meeting, but the flag is important to me, and if we're gonna be up in arms because some people kneel, then the city should do what is right and lower the flag at half mast, if it's the Governor's rule. But though, oh, also, I think this needs to have handicap accessible, so it's accessible to all, not just. Thank you.
Thank you very much, appreciate you coming in. If there's anybody else, come on up as I finish my notes. Anybody? Okay, we'll close the public comment aspect, so we're up with presentations. We have the appointment of Mr. Tim Naibow to the Joint Cable Television Access Board. He's wishing to be considered for reappointment to the Board and Commission. Is there a motion to move to accept?
So move.
Motion, Purpich, support by Rousey. Any conversation or discussion?
Thank you for your volunteerism.
Yes, very much so.
Absolutely, and to anybody who's thinking about any of the boards that we have, continue to reach out to Jackie and the Andor staff so they can get in touch with us. All in favor to accept Tim, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much for looking to be reappointed. All right, our consent for the agenda, we have approval of payroll for February 16th through the 28th of 2025, for a total of $197,791.88. Do we have a motion to move?
So move.
Move by Lillis. Second by Purpich. Any discussion? Pay the payroll, please, write. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, thank you very much. We'll move on to our new business. The first step in our new business is we need to talk about the future town hall meetings, gentlemen. We need to put together a plan, what we're looking at for specific dates. We had discussed the last time that we would look at going quarterly, but this year try to get a second one in barely quickly. So, Jackie, do you want to aim for all four dates today, or do you want to aim for the next one, the next two? What seems, from your past experience, to make the most sense?
I can go either way, except that it'd be nice if when you select the dates, whether it's the next one and we wait, or if we do them all at once, that we select the date where we have the opportunity to get the announcement out on the utility bill, because that's our best way to reach the people.
Sure.
And then also go at the end of the month, like day, working day of the month.
So if we were gonna have a date in April, we would have to, we would go?
Correct. Correct.
So when we discussed this last time, we were talking about end of April, beginning of May, right in that window of time. I would say then we just either look at April 30th or May 7th, they're both Wednesdays, unless you guys are opposed to the Wednesday, but it seemed to have worked out fairly well last time.
I wouldn't be, I would be happy with April 30th. It's a little far out for me to see what's going on, but, oh yeah. I can make it work, as long as it's not snowing.
April 30th would work for me as well.
Fantastic. Okay, so we're gonna put down April 30th for the, for the very next one.
The time.
Let's go with 5:30 again.
Got it.
And we will go with auditorium again. And did you want to aim for the second one from here? It's up to you, gentlemen, or do you want to see how the 30th goes and then go from there?
Well, we could see how the 30th goes, because it's gonna be like two months from the last one, and if we get a good turnaround, then we just continue with it.
Tackle it right afterwards?
Yeah. It works for me.
Yeah, we gotta hope it's good for the people, you know, we're just picking a date out of the air here.
Well, and hopefully getting it out six, seven weeks in advance will make it easier for everybody to kind of get on their agenda. Okay, so, can we make a motion then for that meeting to be on April 30th with all to follow scheduled?
I will make a motion right now.
And I will second.
Motion by Coivinin, second by Rousey. Any further discussion, gentlemen? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Set those dates, please, and get the word out as best we can. All right, moving on, so, I received some literature regarding sexual assault programs, and it's Sexual Assault Awareness Month, and more or less, they look for us to make the community aware. And from my understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, Jackie, something that the City of Evolus has just done, year after year, supporting it, there's, there's flyers in our entry. Do we do anything other, outside of that?
I'll have Stephanie post it on the website.
Okay. All right. So the goal in this is to make a proclamation, correct? So, in a proclamation, now, correct me, Joel, on this, is that like a normal, I'm looking to learn, is it like a normal vote that we're proclaiming that the Board is standing behind the Sexual Assault Awareness Month? So it's just a motion?
It's just a motion to accept proclamation, it's signed by you as the Mayor, and made part of the minutes and posted.
Okay, and how does that, maybe you don't know this answer, but how does that typically assist what their goal is? Do they take all of the Mayors that are supporting this and just kind of make a, like a font of sorts?
Yeah, it's a way of raising awareness, that's exactly what they're trying to do, and this is a in writing way to do that, for the public to know the work that San Luis County is doing with primary and secondary abuse victims from sexual abuse. And it's a good way of letting the public know that, you know, when, when this happens, the City of Evolus has, you have the support of the City of Evolus, that's what the proclamation is saying, right?
Okay.
So, just a way to voice that support and, and put that support in writing.
Okay, wonderful. So with that, I, do we have a motion to move that we move forward with the Mayor proclamation for Sexual Assault Awareness Month?
So move.
Moved by Lillis. Second?
Support.
Support by Purpich. Any further discussion on this? I'm just gonna give a, a basic breakdown of what this packet was saying when I was reading through it, and it was just talking about what had happened in 2024 and what their goal is to, of course, provide information to the public of what's happening, how often it's happening, et cetera. And some of the numbers were actually quite astonishing, but to be able to talk about over 12,000 plus people, et cetera, was quite a bit for me to kind of lock in when you're talking about such a, such a small area at some point. But, other than that, I appreciate you guys taking the step, and Joel, for explaining what a proclamation exactly means, so that we know what we're doing as we move forward with all of these. So, any further discussion, gentlemen? No? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. If you would please get all that information out for the public's eye to see, and let people know that there's verbiage if they want it inside City Hall, that would be great. All right, next up is the Landowner Permission Form, an addendum to the Landowner Permission Form for the snowmobile trail on City of Evolus property. We had a workshop last week where the Trailhawks were able to come in and chat with us a little bit about what they saw as a need to get through our development area behind Service Master, the Lutheran Church, et cetera. And now we're, it's about a 20-foot width over the route that we are utilizing, there is a map, and if anybody wants to see that map at home, it is a part of the packet. Is there anywhere else as well, Jackie, that map? They just have to go into the agenda if they want to see exactly the area we're talking about, correct?
Correct, and I'll speculate that the Trailhawks will have that posted either on some of one of your websites or something like that.
Or post the map.
Yeah, you'll, you'll show that route on a snowmobile map, whether you have it online or Facebook, right?
Once it's ended, it'll go on through the area map.
Okay, once, once you're done with your, your work on it, you're staying. I got you, okay. So if anybody wants to see the exact area that we're talking about prior to that, they can look into the agenda online, and you'll see the map right on there. And if you're wondering what it's under, new business number three. So, gentlemen, do we have a motion to move on allowing this permission?
I will so move.
I will second.
Coivinin to Rousey. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Wonderful, thank you for, let's getting that cleared up, gentlemen, I appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Absolutely, thank you for being here, gentlemen. Next up is request from Brian Zadnaker from Big Stick Meats LLC to work with the city to acquire and develop the city property. We are talking about, have a great one, gentlemen, we're talking about the property that used to be Blackwoods Concrete, that is on the end of Main Street. Brian is looking at getting back into working with the city on creating, well, still to say a meat market in general for now, in his development. It's nothing that obviously we can see overnight, but we have to start working with Brian and his family to get this ball rolling. Is there a motion to move forward with this request?
I will so move, and I, I think it's gonna be a good thing, you know, now that we got back on our right track, you know, losing businesses is no good, but putting a brand new business downtown Evolus, especially a meat market, I think is a plus, so.
Support. Moved by Coivinin, support by Lillis. Any further conversation or discussion, gentlemen?
Just like to say, I'm glad that we're finally moving forward with this and getting it taken care of, getting rid of that piece of property that we've been trying to get rid of for quite some time, and I know there's been a lot of hoops to jump through, and certainly we have dropped the ball, they have dropped the ball, whoever wants to be in there is, you know, but we get that area cleaned up, I think it'll be a nice addition to our downtown.
Absolutely. One thing that I want to state for people that are watching is, this request does not create a building overnight, it's gonna take quite some time to go through the different steps that we have, but we are making it a priority to work with Mr. Zadnaker and, and his family to, to get all of this process going the right way. So we look forward to progress on Main Street. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion will carry, thank you very much. Next up is the resolution, excuse me, Resolution Authorizing the City of Evolus to Submit a Proposal for Funding to Legislative Citizen Commission on Minnesota Resources in Response to the 2025 Environmental and Natural Resource Trust Fund, for proposal. So this goes back to the property of where the school once was, this is for us to seek out funds to create assistance for the park, the trail, things like that that we're looking at doing. It's on top of money that we've already received, and still just a portion of what we will continue to go and look for in the future. Do we have a motion to move forward?
So move.
Moved by Rousey, support?
Support.
Support by Purpich. Any further discussion? You want me to say this exactly how you want me to say it now? She's just smiling, because she knows, this, is this one with the resolution attached? That's the next one?
That's the next one.
All right, perfect, we'll get through this one. All in favor, then, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, thank you very much. She's telling me, you gotta say it the right way, Adam, or it's not gonna work, it's not gonna work. Next up is, that we're moving past the proposal for the services at the junior high. Next one is request for the lots to be purchased on lots one and two on Carter Circle. Is it standard to give the names of those that are looking to purchase it?
It is, because if you folks make a motion that you want to sell them these lots, then I'll work with Joel, and we'll come with a resolution to authorize the sale of the real estate and the purchase agreement, that will come back to you again, and their names will also be included in there.
Okay, so give the names.
Yes.
I didn't want to overstep. So David and Vicky Olson have offered to purchase lots one and two on Cardo Circle for the asking price of $4,000 for both price. These lots are priced to be sold together as the topography of Lot Two adversely limits the buildability of that lot separately. Do we have a motion to move?
I will so move, because we have two there now, it'd be nice to get her all filled up down there, so, it's a good start.
Absolutely. Moved by Coivinin?
Support.
Support by Purpich. Any further discussion?
Just a question for Jackie, if you are aware, is this the same purchaser that has expressed an interest for quite a while on that property, or is this someone new?
Somebody that's rather new, probably the last 30 to 45 days, they've asked me some questions about it, so, you know.
Thank you.
And that was the, the price that was agreed upon for those lots up there?
Correct, you folks had set those prices, oh, I'm thinking, early last year, and that lot, as the Mayor was referencing, really falls off, and you guys determined that that grade is just too steep to combine together, so somebody will have the opportunity to have a really nice sized house and a garage on that.
And a sliding hill.
And a sliding hill.
Well, I think that if, I think it's a great thing that they're, they're gonna build a house there, and maybe that's all we need to get somebody going again, and get some houses built up there, because there's room for some more.
Well, they said there's 120 needed in the Quad Cities, so now there'll only be 119.
You know what, you have to start somewhere.
That's right, I like it, I like it. Now, I already drew a blank, we haven't. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Wonderful, welcome David and Vicky Olson to their new property, please, thank you. And I did drive up there immediately after I saw this, and I'm like, ugh, that other lot is not where I would want to build my house, so it's great.
It's for recreation only.
Yes, yes. All right, so next up is the State of Minnesota Department of Transportation and City of Evolus Detour Agreement, our old Highway 53 to be used temporarily as trunk, uh, temporary trunk highway detour. So Jackie, give a general breakdown of what we're looking at here, please.
I actually think I'm gonna lob that one over to Jerry or Alan about the detour.
That's fair, I just, I want people to understand better than me really doing this in layman's terms, I would like them to understand, I'd like it to be more in layman's terms, please.
I can give a little explanation. When they start the construction process out on Highway 53, they're gonna be doing the bridges, the intersection at Five Seasons, and the roundabout at Long Green, so all at the same time they're gonna start those. And what they're gonna do is they're gonna detour you off the highway by Five Seasons, they already made a little ramp up there, and they're gonna use Hatrick Avenue coming down, and they're gonna clean up that intersection on the bottom of Hatrick and Grant Ave or Park Ave, and make that a little straighter, and then use Highway, Old Highway 53, which they repaved, to get back out on the highway by Borgon Road. And that'll be where all the north and southbound traffic will be coming from now.
And my question, will they be able to come into Evolus from there, or did they turn that down?
Not from that area, no, no. That'll be blocked off, because there'd be so much traffic, and they're not gonna try to slow them down, they don't wanna put a stop sign down on the bottom of Hatrick, they want you to go right through. And there's, they're anticipating a lot of traffic with fishing and everything else, summer activities, so.
Well, there's 10,000, 10, I think I would, we did it that one time, there's 10,000 to 12,000 cars a day, especially opening week in the fishing.
Yeah, so they gotta, gotta keep them moving, yep. And so that's the plan for right now, they're gonna be cutting off that intersection going out of town by the cemetery, the only way out and in will be under the bridge, they'll keep that open as long as possible. They said it might be shut down for a day or two.
And people could still come in from West Evolus Way.
They can still go out the West Evolus Way, yep, yep. So they're gonna make it accessible, it will be accessible, but any construction, you have some hard times, and for the safest routes, that's how they're doing it.
Just so everybody knows that we gave it a try to get them to detour, but I can see their point, that, that we'd have nothing but trouble there if people tried to take left-hand turns there.
Yeah, but if you put stop signs there, a three-way stop or something, it's really gonna cause backups. So that's, that's their answer to it.
Safety.
Safety is the big thing.
Safety wins.
So how, how do you feel about this, Chief? I mean, I mean, what you say isn't gonna change anything, but as far as your side of, of all of this?
Yeah, we'll be down there, we'll be ready, I mean, as long as cars go slow.
You're working on your days off down there, that's what you're doing?
I'll take this for vacation.
Just trying.
It'll be good.
Wonderful, and this is aiming to start, correct, the first week of April, but there's no guarantee of that yet, they're still kind of playing on that date? Is that what I understood?
Yeah, the big constructions, you know, they've been doing a construction all winter, kind of getting in preparation of all the stuff that's gonna be going on, but as soon as school is done, is when they really wanna go at it, so.
Right, they're tearing down the bridges the first week or second weekend of April.
Yep.
So that one weekend will kind of be a little bit of a mess. When we say bridges, we're talking about the bridges, plural, next to Fail Pond, those will be coming down the first or second weekend of April.
And they'll, they'll, those bypasses will be open too, so I mean, they're always gonna have traffic going through there, so.
Right.
Question, I think we may have addressed this at an earlier meeting with Alan, I don't know, you were gonna attend a meeting or something and, and discuss signage, did you get anywhere with that?
So I did talk with Alex Kratz with Mindock, and he, I believe, dealt with Jackie and Jerry and Alan as well, to discuss the signage, and there's some work that was being done on that. The thing I point out on this agreement is, by putting this together in that detour, even though it's kind of some terrible, it allows them to finish the bulk of the stuff in warm construction season on the bridges versus a bridge typically would carry to that second season and a lot of the same. Try to control the pattern, still set up a second year just on the opposite side, so if, that's the big plus here is this agreement allows them to leave the city streets with the detour.
Thank you.
Yeah, we did learn a few other options too regarding signage to help out our communities as far as signs that we can easily move, I don't know, there's a gentleman that ran for Mayor that put up a bunch of signs all over the place.
Boy, did he ever.
One or two. Those types of signs, though, they said that we can utilize those, and then they just pointed out some prerequisites to how close you are to intersections and things like that when you're using them, so, they gave us quite a bit of information, so we can kind of work with our local communities when we get closer to that point about what type of signage we might need, et cetera, so.
Electronic sign fit into the equation?
That was not discussed at all. I don't know if that's because Alex knew it, just wasn't know, or if it's because it just didn't come up.
I think in the right of way, any highway, right of, right of way, they don't want anything there, but you can put them back somewhere else if it's city property, or, you know, you can add to their signs, or you can't put where their signs are gonna be, and I, I don't believe they want it in the right of way, anywhere, so.
Yeah, and I can understand that, but wouldn't that be a kind of a good idea to have some sort of electronic sign, kind of like what they have over by Super One that advises people certain, you know, work, how to get to the downtown businesses, for instance? You know, I know we had that, the electronic signage on our radar, you know, for a period of time, I think we may have budgeted something for that as well, but Jackie's busy.
I was listening, yep.
Okay.
Yeah, electronic.
Do we have some funds for electronic signage?
It can be reprogrammed, that was more about the library and auditorium, but I'm having a thought, consulting with Jager, above the city property, it'd be nice to have something south of town that informs people that during construction, exit on fail. So we'll talk about where there might be a safe place, whether it's by the Quad Cities sign, which we don't own that, but maybe there are.
Talk to Mindock.
We don't own this, we don't have the sign that's by the golf course, that's not on our property?
So the billboard is ours, but I'm talking about Quad Cities, the.
It's in the right of way, Highway right of way.
Well, that is?
Yeah.
I mean, no, they're, they're getting further above.
Thank you.
Alan, Highway right of way, is that 70 feet from the center line?
It varies, yes, it's, Mindock right of way is usually a lot wider than that, especially if it's a four or anything like this.
Thank you.
Alan, you're just prepared to answer any random question, you doesn't know the answer.
Eat your share.
You know if we shoot from the hip, wow.
Well, we like to know how much they control, where we can put and where we can't.
That's fair, I respect that, just don't ask me questions, you're just out of the blue. Appreciate it. Gentlemen, is there any other further discussion on this road project that we have here?
Alan knew it.
All right. State of Minnesota Department of Transportation, and accept the resolution that is attached. Nailed it. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I think we need a moment.
Oh, I'm sorry, we discussed way before the motion, my apologies. So, motion to move on this?
So move.
Moved by Purpich?
Second.
Second by Rousey. So I'll say it again, State of Minnesota Department of Transportation, City of Evolus Detour Agreement, and the resolution attached, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We will build a highway and the City of Evolus will support the road. Thank you, gentlemen. Next up is authorize the Director of Public Works to call for quotes for 2025. Uh, next up is authorize the Director of Public Works to call for quotes for a twenty-twenty-five curb and sidewalk replacement. I will hand the floor to you, Jerry.
Yep, uh, we've been doing this program for many years where we budget so much, the city budget so much. And then since we budget, some money, St. Louis County kicks in some monies to do some sidewalks or curbs on their CASA roads. So together we get about forty-five thousand dollars worth of curbs and sidewalks. It isn't going as far, every year it gets less and less. But I send out a couple quote packets and whoever sends them back in, we go through them and see who hits a bid. And I bring it back to the council and we okay.
You've got the, you've got the sidewalks and curb picked out already for this year?
We have some, not all, no, no. And we get calls too, you know, and we'll check out things and, you know, we do the unsafest sidewalks and, you know, try to do the most of that type of sidewalk. But we haven't had it, we haven't been out getting all of them yet. Cause I didn't even put it all for bids yet. But we do have some in mind.
Well, I'll make the motion that we authorize the Director of Public Works to call for quotes and for twenty-twenty-five.
Support.
Motion by Purpich, support by Lilis. Any further discussion, gentlemen? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. So Jerry, what's usually the timeline on those quotes to where we, we then move forward on what you come up with?
I have the deadline of April second, four-thirty to get the quote packets in. And I'll put them on on a nice spreadsheet and bring them to you guys at the next council meeting after that.
Perfect. Thank you very much. Uh, change order number one. Wow. From DSG Company in the amount of five thousand one hundred and sixty-five dollars for AMI metering improvements.
You should get kinda cranky with these change orders, but I will support this one because the next one is good news. So I will so move that we pay this five thousand dollar one.
Support.
By Coivin and support by Rousey. Any further discussion? Wonderful. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Please pay the bill. Motion carries. This is the one you really wanna talk about? You're excited now?
You know, I gotta, I gotta explain a really quick thing. I was at home going through my packet, right? Well, I saw the five thousand dollar one, my blood pressure just come out. I was ready to rip it apart and I kept reading. Then I got up and I walked away going, eighty-four thousand. I'm going, is that a minus? So I go back and I looked again and I said, son of a gun. It was a minus. And then I went on and kept, I kept looking. It took me four times to realize we were getting a break, so I'm pretty happy with that.
So number eleven, change order number two from DSG Company in the amount of negative eighty-four thousand seven hundred and ninety-seven dollars and thirty-one cents for AMI metering improvements, meaning they give money to the city.
We get it back and it's not often, so it's like winning the lottery for us.
Who's gonna move on this, Joe?
I would so move, please.
By Coivin and second?
Support.
Support with Purpich. Any further discussion on this? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? That one may have cost you an election, gentlemen, if you had a one inside one, just saying. Alright, next up is a pay request number four final from DSG Company in the amount of one hundred and thirty-seven thousand four hundred and ninety-eight dollars and one cent for AMI metering improvements. Now, can you kinda give me a general breakdown, Jerry, on where, where that one heads as far as the overall?
Progress?
Over, we'll go with progress, yes. Thank you.
Okay. Um, HydroCorp came in and they got a hold of almost everyone. We have under a hundred left that they couldn't get. Um, some refused to let us in. But besides that, we have, you know, ninety-two percent success now and they're working fantastic up till now. Back in, I think it was December, we passed an ordinance, uh, giving the people time to get these installed. So I haven't sent out that notice yet because we wanted to wait till summer until we need to do something if we have to move on something. But you pass an ordinance that there'd be a fine. We give, we give the order, they have thirty days to comply. If they don't, the next month is a fine, the second month is a bigger fine, third month is a very big fine. So most people have to, we want everybody on board, we want a hundred percent on this because that's how we keep track of our water supply and our unaccounted for water. And these meters, like I said, they've come in real handy. Now, I've called at least ten people now that have had leaks that they didn't even know they had. Uh, one, I think I mentioned to you, he was in Arizona. His basement was flooding. And I caught it and he got somebody in there and shut it off and he was so thankful. And there's been two or three that were pretty, pretty bad in the basement that the people never got downstairs. So they just couldn't get downstairs to see him. So we've saved some catastrophes in houses. Uh, like I said, they've, they've worked really well up till now, so hopefully we keep rolling that way. And here in a month or two, I'll send out the notices and get that ball rolled. And then we'll give the people so much time to get, get these installed. And if they don't want to, they'll be paying a fine. And like I said, that was a resolution passed by the council back in November or December.
So with this roughly a hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollar payment, what do you foresee as a guesstimate that we might see in the last eight percent then?
Uh, I think there are two hundred and forty dollars a meter. We have eighty left, so you can do the math quick. But yeah, that's, that's about what we have left. We do have a couple cases in stock. So that'll help. We won't have to buy as many, but we'll have to buy some down the road when we get this thing going.
Okay.
The rest we send back so they can get them back on their shelves, but they always have them on the shelves, so they're easy to get.
And our crew is putting them in now, right?
We're, we're putting.
AMI has nothing to do with that anymore, right?
Yep, they're all, HydroCorp was done in, I believe, uh, February or, or January. And they were, they were done with their.
How were they for a company to work with?
They were excellent.
That's what I thought.
Yeah. Yeah, anytime I needed something, I just called this Justin and they were, they were really good to work with. DSG, the company that we bought the meters from, they were fantastic.
That's good to hear.
It's been, it's been good so far. Hopefully it's a happy marriage for thirty years and we'll see. Time will tell.
Perfect. Thank you very much for breaking it down. Uh, do we have a motion to move on this final portion with DSG for now?
So move.
Move by Purpich, second?
Support.
Support by Lilis. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Alright, next up is a resolution accepting a donation for the fire department. For twenty-five red rack fire metal mesh lockers. Value of just over eighty-eight hundred dollars and various hand tools that are just over eight hundred and fifty dollars. And Chief, you're here today. Do you wanna stand up and chat a little bit about what's going on, please?
Sure. What's going on with these donations is the Relief Association moved the pair up. And those monies that we had to, the Relief Association had to donate to get the funds done in order to move the pair up because they're disbanding the Relief Association. The lockers that they purchased, the metal lock, lockers, replaced the old wooden ones that we've had for over thirty years. It's very important with the new cancer studies going on and stuff to eliminate cross contamination and that, this helps majorly. Uh, the hand tools, those just the, uh, socket sets, some, stuff like that, that we just needed in the department. And it was just a way for them to pay down their account. It was very appreciated by me and I'm very appreciated by you guys for the donations. Uh, just, I know, all that money came from fundraising, basically. Um, with the, with the cancellation of the Relief Association now, uh, we have some spouses that are starting an auxiliary and getting a nonprofit so we can continue fundraising and go about it that way. So if you have any questions on that, that's where we're going with the fundraising way. That's all I got. Any questions?
I, I would like to just say, uh, thank you. You know, could you, do we send them a letter or something? Or just, I mean, just, that's very nice of them and I know they had to spend the money down, but they could have done it differently. And this way they got fixed what they wanted to fix, so it's kind of a plus. So I just wanna say thank you.
Yeah.
I agree.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate your time. Alright, so we have a motion to accept the funds from the Fire Relief Association for the City of Fire Department's donations that were given.
So move.
Move by Rousey, second?
Support.
Support by Coivin and any further discussion, gentlemen? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much to the Fire Relief Association. And good luck, obviously, to the auxiliary that's being started by the spouses in the future. I'm sure we'll be hearing from them. Some crackle. Alright, next up is a request from the Ruler Underground to rent the Hippodrome. The roller derby season in Evlith. How long have we been doing this now?
Five years, six years, someplace in there.
And when, and when do the counselors go against the roller derby team? When can I watch you guys do that?
We get to go to honor special legs when they have alcohol to have a beer. And watch them go round and round.
I just thought that I could be like the judge in the middle and say, hit them harder.
You would not wanna see us in skates. We'd all break our legs.
Oh, man. Oh, man. So it runs from March, April-ish roughly, and it ends in July. It looks like they, you guys have set a precedent on what the pay is. Has that been adjusted quite a bit over time, Jackie? Or has it just kind of been a?
I'm gonna lob to Jerry, sorry about that.
Boom.
Here it is. Um, yeah, that's a, that's a price that the council agreed upon when they first started. Uh, it was fifty bucks, uh, a practice and fifty bucks, um, for any scrimmages. And then I think they pay two hundred and fifty for any boat they have, so. And they've been getting less and less on boats. Last year I think they had two, one or two. This year it looks like they got two scheduled. Um, but nobody else is using the Hippodrome. They're, they're very accommodating. If somebody does wanna go in there for just baseball practice or something, they're very accommodating. So we've never had a problem. They're a good tenant and that price was set by the council quite a few years ago.
Um, so what exactly do they have in there that?
They put up all their merchandise tables. Um, they have tape around the inside of the arena for their, uh, I don't even know what it's called.
Course?
Their course, yeah.
Their track.
Yeah, their track. So they have that all taped up. They have chairs on the floor, merchandise, like I said, all over the place, so.
Okay.
So it's pretty, pretty filled up, but if anything comes in there, you know, they, they'll move it off to the side or, you know, like I said, they're very accommodating. They're good to work with, so.
Well, I, I don't believe that we need to make any change to these prices at this point, being that we're this far along. But perhaps a conversation, not saying we do, but just a conversation for the future, if we do future contracts. Uh, just to look into it if you want. Motion to move that we accept the request from the Ruler Underground to rent the hip?
So move.
Motion by Coivin and?
I'll support.
Support by Purpich. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Go down and check that out this year. Alright, uh, approval of spring twenty-twenty-five refuse collection and yard waste pickup schedule. Uh, you'll find this, and this is on the website as well, correct Jackie? Once it gets approved?
Correct.
So anybody that's wondering what this is, does this get mailed out anymore in the, in the utility bill?
It goes out in the utility bill. I just wait for your okay on it. If you guys wanna move forward with it, then we'll get it in the mail next month.
Sounds great. Motion to move?
So move.
Support.
Take your pick, fella.
We'll, we'll go with move, Rousey, support, Purpich for this one. There you go. Further discussion?
Yeah, I just want everybody to know that this notice will be coming in their water bill, right?
Yeah.
Utility bill. Uh, take a good look at all the things that are being offered. It's a great deal. And keep in mind that yard waste and stuff can still be carried down all year long, down to the city garage. Let's clean up the town as best we can. Uh, I hope people will take advantage of cleaning out their garages and their attics and get this stuff down there. It's been very successful. It's been, I think it's a great way to, uh, clean up our town too.
Absolutely, absolutely. I, I'm good for four or five truckloads every time. I know where I get the stuff, but every time it just keeps coming out.
It's like a holiday around our house. My wife is just happy. Oh, boy.
Alright, we have a, uh, we already did that part. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. One thing I wanna ask about this, and not just specifically, but people that are living in apartment complexes that are not getting water bills. How are we getting this information in their hands? Are we putting, are we having, somebody go on and put up posts in the bulletins? Do we send it to the, the unit manager and have them post it? What is, what is usually the plan for stuff like this or the town hall meeting or any of those things?
Yep, um, they do go out in the utility bill, so if the manager gets a utility bill, he can inform the people. He can put, he can put it up on a bulletin board. Um, it's also on our website. Uh, but that's how most people get, will get informed about that. And most bigger apartment complexes know about it already and they call and see when it's coming. And, uh, cause they, they come down there, we know where they're from and.
Right, and I guess, I'm not just speaking of just this, but just all of our announcements when we put them in the water bill. You know, when we talk about a town hall meeting that's happening on, I just forgot the date already, April thirtieth. You know, if I don't get a water bill, how do, how do, how am I finding out about this? Are we putting our faith that the manager of the building is just posting it? Is there anything that we can do that you can think of? Not putting you on the spot, Jerry, maybe you're gonna hear me on the spot, but.
No, um, the big thing is putting it on our website, you know? Most people have a phone, they have access to the website, uh, when they wanna see something. But as far as getting out there and telling everybody that lives in a duplex or apartment, you know, I, I don't know the answer to that. And that'd be pretty tough to do, but, um, you know, just asking the managers to post and try to get the word out to those people.
I don't know if I can say anything about that. I don't know.
If you got two seconds for a shirt?
There's a Facebook group, um, that was starting, uh, Community of Evlith. It's for non-government, it's non-governmental, but it's for community members. And we're working on ramping that up right now. Um, also, there's an Iron Range group where information can get out to people. Um, the public library hosts all their events and the public library, there's a taxpayer funded, you know, group, right? It's a business, a nonprofit business. Um, so they have a Facebook page that they can take, like I said, a screenshot of the city's, um, uh, document that was posted. And I sent it to the library today. Like that can be transferred so that it's accessible to the library. I also think, you know, things are posted here, but I don't know for sure if they're posted at the post office and physically posted at the library too. I also know that, uh, Shortstop has a window there that people can go and post, you know, events or whatever. And I think that would be a good opportunity to get it out so that people aren't relying on their landlords or, you know, if they're a senior citizen in a situation where their kids are taking care of their bills, they might not see that or might get disconnected there too. So there's lots of opportunities to take it out there.
Appreciate that. I'd actually like to chat further about that at, um, our workshop about some ideas of what we might be able to do. It might just be about Facebook or working with the libraries or whatever. But something we should probably just look into about getting a word out to those people that are living in apartment complexes. And perhaps they are getting all the information, we're just, no, you, nobody else is overthinking it. Maybe I'm just overthinking it.
Do you not have a community posting down, uh, across from?
We have one downtown.
Isn't that?
I don't know if we put anything in it.
Not lately, but I know there's one there because I helped put it up.
Yeah, down by the big stick.
Yeah, right, right next to it there.
Which we could, I think at one time we would have our, I think somebody would go down there with what was going on and put it up in there. And a lot of people looked at it, you know, so maybe it's something we could start doing again because it's there. I mean, if we're not gonna use it, it shouldn't be there, but it's there. If we're not gonna use it, it shouldn't be there, but it's there and it's fairly new, so let's start using it.
Is that in working order, Jackie?
Do you mean working order, like do we have a key to get into it?
Yeah, I mean, it does, yeah.
I'll just reiterate, you know, the potential for the electronic signage again, if, if that's something that we can talk about at our workshop or whatever, we're, we can strategically position a couple electronic signs around town that can be accessed by computer from City Hall and the messages change that will and that type of thing. I think that would be quite useful.
That and, you know, that Facebook is a big thing, boy. You've got, I mean, it's unbelievable.
Better or worse?
Well, you know what? I, I've got almost five thousand friends on mine and I catch some stuff from people, but you know what? After I explain my view, you know, everybody's pretty good. You know, of course you get one or two people that aren't so nice, but, you know, you just get used to dealing with them, but that's a good way to get people around.
So regarding that, if we want to just put right on the agenda, Jackie, that we just discussed, whether that includes electronic signages or the other options that we discussed, we'll put that on the agenda for the workshops. We can try to talk that out and get some ideas going, maybe get some numbers, what have you. I appreciate it. Wonderful, so we'll move on to, uh, board and liaison updates. I'll start on your end with you, Joe.
Well, I, the only really bored one I have is the airport that Jim and I are on and our airport guy's, uh, given us his notice, so we are going to open it up again and, and see where we're at, but I think myself, and I can't speak for Jim, but we need to get together and, and do something with that before something, before it goes to heck. You know, it, there's, to, to run stuff with one meeting a month is tough, especially when somebody retires or leaves, so, and then you can't talk about anything at a meeting because it's not on the agenda, so you gotta wait another month. So you're always like two months behind and, and by then, you know, hell could break loose.
We get, we get into a season where we're not, we're not prepared for it. Right now, we need, um, we need to post for, uh, the position of manager of the...
Yes. What was the date that you guys were given?
I think it's April thirtieth. You know, and, and we'll see how it's going, but like I said, it's once a month, so now we have to wait until the first week again, so we're standing here with our thumbs up in our nose and you really can't do anything and...
We did, we did the same thing, uh, last month when we asked for, uh, uh, people to come in, uh, for a part-time job out at the airport and it was a full month before we even got back to interviewing.
Yep.
And another month, you know, so...
And I don't know if there's anything that we can do to maybe have two meetings a month. I mean, because we should have at least two a month, and I'm not saying I like it because it's our time, but if we're gonna run something, let's run it right. I mean, and right now, it's not being run right. I mean, this is our airport that we're concerned about and Virginia's in it with us and I know they're concerned, but since I got a big mouth, I'll let her fly and, and I mean, that's just what we have to do and if we have to go two times a month, so be it.
So is that something where you guys can call for a special meeting to speed things up?
I've got it, Jackie.
Yes, yes, and technically, when the airport, by the way, so when the airport sets its usual meeting schedule and posts that schedule, it becomes a regular meeting, just like your council meetings, so if something comes up at the meeting, okay, you can add it to the agenda, okay? It's when you have special meetings like we've had or when we have workshops are considered special meetings where you can't add to the agenda, so...
So we actually, when we're at a meeting, we could talk about something? I mean, we get shot down so much, I mean, here's just one quick thing, is our last meeting, I've got a question for our lawyer.
Yep.
And I've shot down saying, he's not on the phone, so you can't discuss it. Well, I'm sorry, what the hell am I there for? I mean, we got some pretty big things going on out there that we can either close it or keep it going, I mean, it's just, it's this type of stuff that I'd like to talk to our lawyer and if he's not on the phone and the chair says, I can't talk, well then what do you do?
Okay, so I'll talk to Brett, the administrator of Virginia, I'm no longer the fiscal agency to go with that. I'll talk to her about that, reminding folks that if you publish that notice, here's your regular meetings, you can add things to the agenda and also to suggest when there's items that come up where he's not on the phone, the attorney, or even if the engineer wasn't on the phone, that they can appoint a small committee, okay, of less than a quorum.
Yep.
Okay? Or even a quorum if you post it as a special meeting to have those discussions and then bring it back to the next board meeting. So I'll, I'll talk to Brett about giving some more guidance to the staff that's remaining to help them...
Yeah, because when I look at my agenda, okay, if you, and Jim, you can tell me if I'm right or wrong, but I knew this question that I have for our lawyer was gonna be coming up because I had the agenda for a week. Why isn't our lawyer on the phone? I, I mean, to me, that's ludicrous. And I would really appreciate it because it's like going to a meeting and then going home and nothing gets done.
Yeah, that's exactly what it felt like.
Then you gotta wait for the next meeting.
Exactly what it felt like.
You know, it's like, why am I wasting my time going out there when nothing's happening?
I was about to say the same thing, he didn't, when he got shut down, I thought, oh, that didn't seem right, but...
Yeah, it's scolding.
Yeah.
It hurt my feelings.
Boy, I guess.
But it's just, yeah, it's like bumping your head against the wall. I mean, it just needs some clarity on what we're doing out there and, you know, I think we can go in the right direction. Of course, we have to back up to go ahead, but you know what? Sometimes you have to do that and it's worth it and I, I think we can get it running correctly. We just gotta get all the pieces together.
So if, if we're at our meeting and we discuss some, the stuff that's on the agenda, can, uh, one of us say, okay, well, that's fine, like, well, for instance, well, the manager handed in his resignation right there at the meeting. I mean, it was right there and he wrote it, he wrote about, we were discussing some other stuff, he wrote up, there's my resignation, you know, handed it to us. Well, to me, that's a hot topic item, so if I had to sit to Joe, you know, maybe we should just have another meeting if we posted that meeting.
Yeah, correct.
At that, at that meet, our last meet, if I ever said, let's, let's have another meeting right away, that could have been done.
Correct.
And then my next question, since...
Excellent hours?
Three days.
Since we're on this, my question to you is, okay, we have a chair and a vice chair. I'm the vice chair. Now, let's say we want to have a meeting and the chair says, no, let's wait for a month. Can the vice chair bring it up and so we can vote on it?
I'll defer that one to Joe.
I'll defer that to your legal counsel for the airport. Well, I can't get him on the phone.
So I think in the joint powers agreement, there is some provisions, one of those rewritten for the calling of special meetings, so if the chair, because the mayor here, you know, chairs the meeting, that chair chairs the meeting, there's not an opportunity for you to speak. I do believe there's some protocol already written that allows for calling of special meetings, okay? Now, Mayor, may I continue? I want to ask Joe something. Okay, so let's say somebody hands in a resignation and it wasn't on the agenda and the board has already been through, approved the agenda, okay? Can they bring it up even though it wasn't officially added to the agenda?
Yeah, they, if they modify the agenda again, they reopen it, um, they could do that, uh, but yeah, I, I appreciate you bringing it up, but there are questions for the legal counsel for the airport authority.
Well, we're just trying to figure out what the committee can't do out there. I mean, it's been, how do you say, it's been in our craw for a while, so...
Well, yeah, it bothers them to sit here and hear that your guys' hands just sound absolutely handcuffed every time you go there and to receive resignation letters and things like that don't sound like things you sit on even for a moment, let alone...
I, I've been there three months now, Joe, January, February, March, three months I've been there and every time, there's been a surprise. We need more people. We don't get this, we didn't get that. I mean, it's, it's, it was a lot for me because I didn't know how the airport was run. I'm getting the slow end of this thing as I'm moving forward, but, uh, you know, it was, it wasn't a good meeting last time, I had a bad, I thought about it for quite a while after the meeting. Especially when he handed in the resignation right there. I mean, it was on a piece of pad paper and that was it.
I thought long and hard about getting off of this committee about six months ago. I talked to Jackie a little bit about it because I go home and it's just, I've been on it for a long time and, and I'm not a quitter, so I'm sticking it out, you know, but it, it gets hard, you know? I, I mean, we want to run it right. I mean, eight months ago, I thought we were going in the right direction and then stuff happened and now we're not going in the right direction and then nobody's helping to make it go. And I mean, Jim, look at each other like, huh, what are we doing here?
And there was, well, yeah, there, there was no real explanation about why we couldn't discuss it, so I...
So I'm guessing that the chair is a person from the Virginia council, then?
Yes, yeah. And rightly so, because when we elected for twenty twenty-five, the chair, I was the only one there and I certainly wasn't qualified to understand the workings of the airport, so...
Well, he, he chairs it well, it's just, we needed to know what we can and can't do and I guess I should have asked this question months ago, but again, I'm not the brightest bulb in a pack, so it happens, but now I just want to know so we can go forward and I don't feel like I'm not doing anything when we're there.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but anybody else on this board is allowed to go there and just be a citizen or can we be a citizen?
Absolutely.
Anybody can go. It's an open meeting.
Even if we're on the board, it doesn't mess up with the whole quorum or whatever?
You're an alternate, I believe?
Yeah, he's an alternate.
Oh, as long as, okay, Joe.
You would be attending as a member of the public and not as part of the board.
Yeah.
So you wouldn't be able to participate as a board member vote, uh, in your alternate capacity, but it is an open meeting.
Okay.
Different hat.
Got you.
So he could come out there and listen and...
There is a comment, period. Just like that, I mean, no.
Okay, thank you. Joe, do you have anything else on?
No, I think I took enough of everybody's time. Thank yous.
Mr. Purpich, good. Thank you. Mr. Lillis?
We have our HR meeting scheduled for this Wednesday, three P M. at, uh, the Hilltop Hall or Clay Court Facility, so we have nothing to report to this point.
And I'll tell you that we have our E D A meeting, is that the twenty-seven? All I know is we haven't had it.
Right, later this month.
So it will be, well, that's the best they can do. I got a book full of dates, pal.
You're so funny.
So I, too, have nothing to add.
Okay. Um, I had reached out and started attending some Rams events, like I told you before. Thank you so much for not attending the one you were invited to, the meal was absolutely amazing.
I was working and I couldn't get to St. Paul.
Yeah, well, I should have.
Should have brought me.
Bring it back, doggy bag. So it was a good communication at the one in St. Paul. The one in St. Paul was primarily designed to bring, uh, community members of different levels of their stature, I suppose, we could say, or what have you, but we had senators, we had state legislators, representatives, we had mayors, council members, we had school reps, um, the whole nine yards. It was just a nice gathering to kind of get a gist of what everybody had going on and idea what they're working on so we could try to work together. Um, like you say, uh, Jim, when you're in those meetings, sometimes you're the newbie, you're like, I, I got nothing for you, but I'm listening. So it was a lot to take in and a lot of, but a lot of hands were shook and a lot of people were met, um, that I think they'll be able to assist us as we move forward. I did that after I was down at Capitol Hill, um, doing Jerry's dirty work and, uh, talking to legislators about, uh, eight hundred thousand dollar, um, monies that we're looking for for the wastewater treatment and, I don't know, I think things went well, but they didn't have me a check when I left, so I don't know if that's good or bad, but ultimately it was an experience. I took the time then to chat with, um, Representative Worris and Senator Farnsworth and just kind of give them some ideas on things that are going on in Evlith so that they weren't acting shocked, as everybody knows, there's one topic that's on a lot of people's minds in the public, but, so there were a lot of those conversations. Um, public access meetings, in case you didn't know, they're buried in the back of the building. You could walk around there for twenty minutes pulling unlocked doors, but it's on the last door, uh, so I didn't catch that one last month, but I will now know what door to pull on. And then, uh, myself and Mr. Koyvenen just enjoyed time with the I triple R B. and we are excited to bring that information to the table at our workshop come, uh, next Monday, correct, at two o'clock?
March twenty-fifth.
Yeah, and I'd like to thank them, I'd like to thank them again because it was a pretty good meeting.
Twenty-fifth.
March twenty-fifth.
It's a Tuesday.
Yep.
You good?
Yeah.
Okay, March twenty-fifth, two o'clock here at the council chambers where we are going to have, um, I'll be working, but I can leave from here.
Sure.
Okay, we'll see. And, and, uh, Mr. Streeter's gonna be joining us?
Correct.
And if anybody has any other agenda items for the workshop that need to be added, please reach out to Jackie ASAP so we can get those added, because as we just learned, we cannot add them at the course of the day.
Correct.
Boom, I learned something today.
Two thirty, two o'clock?
Two o'clock.
Two o'clock.
Two o'clock.
Two o'clock.
Got it.
March twenty-fifth.
Got it. Police chief, Lindy?
Nothing today, sir.
Appreciate you and everything you guys are doing. Anything else on your mind, Jerry?
Yes.
Here we go.
And Jackie, anything on your...
Not asking for anybody, uh, Ellen apologized, he had another meeting he had to get to that already started without him, so he was rushing to that, um, since the main meeting was done, but he apologized. Um, second is we turned the compressors off at the hippodrome on last Wednesday. The Wilderness got done with their hockey schedule, they didn't make the playoffs, so we were able to shut it down and move on and start cleaning it and painting and getting ready for the golf season. When that's all done, we'll head out to the golf course as soon as it snows, nothing. But yeah, they were close to making the playoffs, so we were kind of just waiting for them to give us the...
Go ahead.
But usually we close down the first week of March, so we went a little longer this time and we would have went another week or two longer if they would have made the playoffs.
And do you feel as though the hippodrums, compressors and everything would have held up had they made it another couple weeks, didn't get too warm for it?
Yeah, it never got too warm. I mean, the September, when we started it up in September, that was a little tough on the system, um, but it was warmer then, you know? It's still getting up in the sixty, seventy sometime, so that's always touch and go and I know they want ice earlier. We didn't, we have a little bit of money from the I triple R B. to, uh, start the, the,